I call the planning commission meeting for April 15, 2021 to order, and we will all begin with a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Tiedemann?
Here.
Mr. Varga?
Here.
Mr. Cicero?
Here.
Mr. Haddon?
Here.
Mr. Perkovich?
Here.
Mr. Snow?
Excused.
Mr. Cook?
Here. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes from the regular meeting, March 25, 2021. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. On tonight's agenda, we have two public hearings, and we'll follow this format. First, the applicants will have the opportunity to explain what they would like to do at a particular location. Second, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposal will be given the opportunity to do so. Finally, anyone wishing to speak in opposition will be afforded the time to do so as well. Or some people may just have questions, and we'll try to get those answers. And with that in mind, we have a conditional use permit to allow the child daycare at 9055 Mentor Avenue. Is that applicant here? Will you please come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record?
I believe the consultant and the potential applicant, I'm sorry, occupant is online.
Okay, Larry, can you bring?
Yes, they are. I'm going to unmute Otis Thomas now. Otis, you've been unmuted.
Hello, my name's Otis Thomas. I am the applicant.
Okay, will you give us your address for the record, please?
Yes, the address is 9055 Mentor Avenue. That is Mentor, Ohio, 44060.
Thank you. Please tell us a little bit about what you want to do at this location.
Yes, so we are looking to expand and open up our third daycare center. We currently have two centers that have been successful. They're both located in Euclid, Ohio. I'm a service-disabled veteran. We are looking to expand and grow the business and turn this current restaurant into a childcare facility to, of course, service infant through schoolager.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody here wishing to speak in favor of this proposal? Is there anybody wishing to speak against this proposal? Okay, thank you. This public hearing is closed. Is there anything from the administration?
I will note, Mr. Chairman, one of the conditions that were recommended to the commission is specifically Item 2 under Site Plan. A copy of cross-access easements with the property to the west shall be provided as part of the building permit review. I heard from the applicant today, and they have indicated they've researched the title, and I have representatives of the property owner here in the audience today who have confirmed the same, that there are actually no cross-access easements in place, and they don't desire to have any. So if anything, that might be something that we could consider modifying if in... ...that access. So there isn't any cross-access with... to protect the daycare.
Okay, thank you. So I guess on that note, I would like to see that connection to the old hobnobbers, that would be in the back corner there. Can we get a curb added there to close that connection off? This is for the applicant.
Yes, yes, we can do that.
Okay, so we can add a condition for a curb there. Also, one other thing is the... As you come in, the in-only off Mentor Avenue, those three... You have a little green space there on the immediate left. There's three spots as you come in. I'd like to see you get rid of those three spots and add some more green space, grass, plantings, to give this a little bit more of its own feel. Would that be an issue?
Trying to see if my development consultant Garrett is on the line. If he's not, I think we had discussed that. That should not be a problem. We can definitely try to work through that as well.
Okay, thank you. And then also, you have a...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Garrett Allen, his development partner, is online, and I have unmuted Garrett in case he would like to answer those questions.
Gary, did you hear those questions?
Or not.
Okay, well, I guess I have more for the applicant is you have the out shown on Victoria. I'd like to see a sign there that says, you know, exit only. You're showing it on the plan, but I'd like you to have an exit-only sign. Are you okay with that, too?
Yeah, that's totally fine.
Okay, and I had one more issue is that... Is there going to be school bus issues here? Because I know at these places, you know, they offer busing to and from the elementaries, junior high and high school. Have you figured out... Is there enough turn radius here to get a bus in? Or would you just be dropping them out on Mentor Avenue? Have you thought about that?
Yes, I've thought about that. But we have many buses. They're not the full scale. So they should be able to accommodate the smaller turning radius. And then there should be enough room in the parking lot, plenty of room to maneuver.
Okay, so you don't have any of the big yellow buses coming from the schools doing drop-offs?
Correct, yeah. We're not allowed to have that in childcare. It cannot reflect anything close to a full-size school bus. It can't be yellow. It has to be white or a different color. So we'll comply with that. That shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything from the fellow commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Tiedemann.
I have a quick question for the applicant. What is the play area going to be made out of?
The play area, so right now, what we are considering, the requirement by licensing is that you have... You just need to have a blacktop, a space that is designated for the children to play. We don't necessarily have to have playground equipment. There also needs to be some type of shade, and it needs to be fenced in and closed. The reason for the bollards surrounding the fencing is for added protection, because we know that there might be some traffic flow. In the event that we do put playground equipment down, we would need to have so much fall space or surface with mulch or rubber mulch or something like that, so.
And you said you're going to put bollards around the fence?
Correct, yes.
And what are those going to be made out of? What are you proposing to do there?
Proposing to use cement to just have added reinforcement and protection. We're really about the safety of the children, so we want to make sure we have that in place as well.
Hi, this is Aron Goldman. I'm the architect. Can I speak to this?
Sure.
Hi, Aron Goldman, 5511 Grace Drive, Mentor, Ohio, president of Focus Planning, Inc. I'm the architect for the project. These bollards are going to be concrete-filled pipe bollards. They'll be painted a bright color. And we're going to do that just to protect, you know, the kids from any vehicles, because there is a line of traffic around it. We also want to bring up the one... There was one question in the planning report about addressing two parallel parking spots that are actually in the right-of-way of Victoria Street. Those are off the property. There's actually three spots. One before the trees planting area and two beyond. And these are to the east of the building. Those are actually off-property. All that area is actually in the right-of-way of Victoria Street, according to the site survey. And I'm not sure if you're aware of that.
Sorry, are you able to hear me now? This is Garrett Allen, sorry.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Perfect, Garrett D. Allen, 2222 Detroit Avenue, Cleveland, Ohio, owner of Allen &amp; Allen Consultants LLC. To kind of go off of what Aron was saying about these three spots, after discussing with Otis, we ideally would like to keep them as-is. It's really more of a budgetary concern. I'm sure everyone is aware of how construction costs are really creeping up there. And, you know, we have to go into this building. The building could have a small fire that needs to be remediated along with installing a brand-new sprinkler system, which was mentioned in the planning staff report. So just the sheer cost alone of those two items, along with the actual kind of raise of labor and material in general that we're seeing, you know, any little bit of efficiency we could pick up would really be helpful. And I think Otis would agree to that. And that's kind of where we're at with those, especially with them being in the right-of-way.
Thank you. Kathy?
Staff is indicating it looks like... It sounds like that those parking spaces were actually installed by the property owner, and the property owner's in the audience. Maybe they can speak to it, because it wasn't something that was authorized or approved as part of a plan.
Okay. Is the property owner here? Please come up here to the... We can't hear you. And just state your name and address for the clerk, please.
Bill Lennon, and our office is 7139 Hopkins Road. We have Lennon Realty. And the Youngs listed their property with my brother and myself. And he believes one of the renters that he rented to after they closed the Golden Palace Chinese Restaurant put those in. He did not.
Okay, Kathy?
I think the point we had was is they... They are in the right-of-way. Any lawn that's with... Any lawned area that is technically within the right-of-way is still maintained by the property owner. We would rather not see them as parking spaces. It's more of a hazard to have them as a parking space than it is to just be grassed.
Right, I'm in an agreement with administration, too. The overall cost of a project to saw-cut some asphalt out and put some topsoil and grass down, and, you know, it doesn't seem like it's that much, but... You know, there's plenty of grass in the right-of-way. Every... I don't see a problem with it either, so for what's that's worth. Mr. Varga?
Mr. Chairman, I think someplace in the application it said that the maximum occupancy number of children was 70. Is that correct? Anyone can answer from the proposal.
Right now, that is going to be based on us, you know, with the square footage being measured. And, you know, the fire department will give us a certificate of occupancy for the building itself, but then licensing will have to come out and measure. And then they will assess how many children were licensed to have.
And this leads to where I'm going with this, which is not so much that I... That's a problem, 70. But the number of people then that show up to pick up 70 kids, or 50 kids, or whatever the number is, is somewhat substantial. And because it's daycare, most of those people show up in around the same period of time, 4:30, 5:30, 6 o'clock. Has anyone thought about the idea and about switching the flow of traffic? To have the in come in at the top off the side street and have the out go into Mentor Avenue? And the reason I bring this up, I'm just... It's an observation, is that you're only going to be able to queue up a certain number of people when they're picking up their kids. And if there starts to be more than that amount between Mentor Avenue and the door, they're going to end up with an awkward situation at Mentor Avenue. Some people are going to be out on the Turn Island trying to make the turn-in, or just people backed up into Mentor Avenue. If you made the in on the other side, they could queue up in the street to a certain degree. Or you could actually, you know, tell them to queue up down the street to come back in at the north end of the parking lot. So then you wouldn't have a queuing problem at Mentor Avenue. Does any of what I'm saying make any sense to you?
Yes, definitely. That seems like a valid concern, and that should be a pretty small fix. We can do that. That should be...
Okay. So right now, this is just... Are they going to come back for... Or is this the... Our only... This is preliminary, right?
This is just a conditional use review, and we've included this... We've incorporated the site plan review into that.
Okay, so they're not coming back again?
Unless you want them to...
Then I would start to suggest that you reverse the flow and the direction of traffic, so that you come in at the... You know, you... People would, as they do now, turn on the Victoria Drive. It's an established turn. And then enter the site from the upper... The northern drive. You go in that way. You turn and come out, and then people can kind of turn onto Mentor Avenue.
So that's what you said...
And they won't queue up. You won't get a queuing situation that would back up into Mentor Avenue. I mean, you may get it backed up into Victoria, but that's not Mentor Avenue at 5 o'clock at night.
This is Aron Goldman again, the architect.
Yes.
That would just require restriping. The angled spots would have to just be striped to turn the other direction.
Yeah, and I think that would make a kind of a big problem go away. I mean, it's not a problem... Doesn't appear to be a problem until it becomes a problem, and then there's nothing you can do about people parked, you know, trying to turn in. So I would... I'm going to make that a requirement.
Okay. So the exit sign would be Mentor Avenue, exit only?
Exit only, right.
You'd have a "do not enter."
"Do not enter," and then you'd have your entrance at top. And then you can coordinate with your... With the parents as to how they want to queue up on Victoria Avenue, so that they're not in Mentor Avenue. And then this is just one... And since I'm glad the architect's on, I just want to ask this a simple question. I look quickly at the floor plan. There's a hallway that goes down to the end in a... To a room that says "infant." And then from that room, there's three exit doors. Is by any chance that's... Those exit doors required? And if so, you might want to extend that hallway to get to that first exit door.
Yeah, that... Only one of those exit doors is really required. They're there already. So we're just indicating them as already there. We... I've already met the egress requirements. If we wanted to, we could extend to include that one. We don't... That's really exit-only in emergency, you know, with a panic paddle. That is not for... Obviously, you don't want kid... You don't want anybody being able to enter a building into an infant area.
No, I agree. I agree 100%. I'm only thinking about it as an emergency exit, because otherwise, you kind of have a long corridor there. You're going to have more than 50 people in this building. I would just suggest you extend that corridor. Now, this is a building department thing, really. It's not a planning commission, but I'm just making that observation, that you might want that corridor to go to that one exit.
Well noted, and, you know, we did this as a concept layout only, and I think it's a great point.
Sure. That's all. Thank you.
Kathy?
Just a concern with changing the direction of flow. We were just discussing... That might then force the exit out of the parking lot a right-out only.
Right-out only.
But on Victoria, you wouldn't necessarily... You wouldn't have that restriction. So that would be an engineering department call.
Okay. I mean, I'm not trying to... I'm trying to think about solving a problem, which is people queuing up into Mentor Avenue.
Sure.
And so this would give them twice... At least twice the length of queuing. Maybe more than... You know, maybe three times the length of queuing, so that, you know, if they end up with between 50 and 70 people... There are kids in here, and they are... People are all getting picked up at the same time. You're going to have a dozen cars, maybe, at any given time, and there's not room for them to queue going in.
I mean, I get why you're doing it. I'm just saying that that could create another issue for those that are utilizing the facility. If they all have to only turn right, it might be a problem for them. And it might...
Yeah, but that's a problem that doesn't impose a safety factor issue... An issue, you know? People queuing... Extending out into Mentor Avenue, that's a safety issue. I... Well, you know, you can resolve... I don't have a problem. Let traffic review that again. But I still think they need more queuing space.
You could have an employee there making sure people pull all the way up, though, so you could control that queue. And I'm sure the younger kid pickups, the parents are going to park.
Right by the door.
Am I right with this, or I'm asking the applicant?
Yes. Traditionally, we do encourage the parents to come inside, because they need to sign their kids out. You know, if there's anything we need to hand to the parents. But most parents are going to come inside the facility.
And when they do that, are they going to park in the space, or are they just going to park in the driveway?
They need to park in a parking space, walk in to get their child, and then... Once they pick up their child and sign out, then they exit. Yeah.
All right, well, if that can be maintained, then you don't... Then maybe you don't need to reverse the flow of the track. But the concern is, as soon as that becomes a problem, just like we have at some of the car washes, you know, we shut down that kind of problem right away, where you can't turn in any longer. So you don't want cars queuing up. So, all right, let's say, leave it the way it is. But if it's a problem, it may come back for us to have to review. Or the traffic will have to review it.
So you can add, under the conditional use permit conditions, that you reserve jurisdiction on any future traffic issues?
Yes. Yes, that'll be the condition.
You had mentioned that you run two other of these in two other communities. Do you have any trouble with queueing there? Or do you know what the rush is when the parents come pick up the kids? Can you speak on this at all?
Yes, it staggers. So we have parents in the morning that come from anywhere between 6:00 and like 9:00 a.m. is the cutoff. And then in the afternoon, we have parents that come as soon as 2:00 p.m. all the way through till 7:00 p.m. So it staggers, but the parking is adequate enough where they can all maneuver, get in and out. It works out fine. There's not really a lot of queuing issues.
Okay, so then I'll withdraw the suggestion to reverse the flow, the direction, but we'll add a condition that says that we will reserve the right to review any traffic problems that may occur, based on operations.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anything else from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman? To the applicant, I'm assuming the way the students access the play area is through the north... The two north doors in the building, not along the driveway? On either side of the existing cooler, there's two doors shown on the plan?
Correct.
I don't think you want kids walking along the parking lot to the play area. That's all I'm suggesting.
They can't. The only access to that... The only access to the play area is through that hallway. It's to prevent that. There's no... There's no way to get into that play area from outside. So you have to go through the building. That's part of the code for childcare, you know, in the code regarding childcare facilities. It's got to be a secure play area.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Varga?
I just have one other question. Just the patio in front, and it's the enclosed or covered patio area. Is there any use of that that's envisioned by your operation?
Not at the moment, no. We can't... I'm still trying to brainstorm that, but right now, it would not be for any licensing capacity at this point.
Okay. Just... I just wanted to know, because the space is there. Something will end up... It'll be used for something at some point. I just want to know if you had some idea what it might be.
It could be an employee area, employee break area. Definitely no kids will be out there. It's too close to Mentor Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Can I get a motion?
I will give a motion to approve with the conditional use permit with four stipulations. Is that correct?
Yeah, and then you could do the site plan one separately.
Together, separately.
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. And can I get a motion on the site plan?
Site plan? The vote to approve with six conditions.
Five, six is the...
The sixth is that we reserve the right to...
It's under the conditional use permit.
Oh, that's under conditional?
That's the first...
So the six would be the three parking spaces on the...
No, no.
East side. The exit-only sign to Victoria. The curb between the adjoining property.
Those are actually in the conditions already.
They are, I'm sorry.
They're in... The exit only is in... Under the conditional use permit conditions. And then the three parking spaces is under Number Four of Site Plan.
Okay. And the curb is... Could be added to the Number Two?
Replace Number Two. Provide curbing between properties at the rear of the site. Replacing the language that's there now.
Okay.
Okay, so that we have five. Okay, so approve with five conditions.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Haddon?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Yes, thank you. We have a conditional use permit to allow outdoor dining and/or drinking at seventy-four eighty-five Mennor Avenue. Is that applicant here? Please state your name and address for the clerk.
Joe Myers, the architect for the project, and Craig Polling is the owner of TJ's.
Please tell us a little about, well, what you wanna do.
Okay, uh, as you know, having an outdoor patio has become pretty critical for restaurants in this day and age, and TJ's has not had one up to this point, but would like to create one. In front of the building now is landscaping, and so they propose to add a patio to the, in front of the building, in that landscaped area. It would be, you know, a concrete patio with a wrought iron style fence around it with stone piers, surrounded by a row of abreviati. There is, uh, bollards, which is required by your code, interspersed amongst the abreviati around the outside of the patio, and, and then just kind of reimage the front of the building to give it a fresh look with, uh, more, uh, modern canopies and, uh, and add some more stone to the exterior of the building to tie it all together.
Thank you. Is there anybody here that would like to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone would like to speak against it? Alright, this public hearing is closed. Anything from administration?
Nothing other than the items noted in the report.
Okay. I do have one thing, we've had some, uh, issues with abreviati and the salt from, uh, if I remember, there was an issue at the, uh, library, where they put a row up and the, and the salt was slinging on it and killed them, so I guess you could try the abreviati.
Okay.
But the plow coming down Mennor Avenue, I, I know there's a formula for the speed and how far it kicks it over, do you, do you think that is gonna be an issue? Or, I guess you could try, but...
I'll speak to the landscape people that, about it, and see if there's either a substitute for it, or if we need to protect it.
Yeah, I think they, didn't Kathy, am I right, did they all die?
They did.
Yeah.
We had another concern listed in the report, it's not a listed condition, but in the analysis section with regard to those, if, if they were too close together and form a hedge, then there's a height restriction that you have to take into consideration. So, if you wanted to do something in lieu of that, to not worry about the height, that could be another consideration, or they could be just separated more.
Okay, um, we could look at that. What is the height restriction?
Well, anything that forms a he, a hedge shall not exceed three feet in the front setback.
Okay, and we'll, we'll probably separate them.
I had one condition, it was, it was in the staff report, that, uh, at no time, uh, the enclosure to become, uh, to have walls or a roof.
Okay.
So it would just, okay.
That's the idea.
Alright.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Varga?
Just have a question, the, the proposed condition number six talks about the spacing of the bollards as being fifty-six, uh, fifty-four inches and sixty-four inches apart from one another. It looks like the piers that you use for your fence are probably spaced further than that?
The piers are further apart than that. I thought the bollards were tighter than that.
You're gonna put bollards outside of the piers, is that what you're gonna do?
The bollards are outside of the, yes.
Okay, so you will meet the spacing?
The bollards are, will protect the patio, not the fence or the piers.
Okay, not, not the fence of the, fine, that clarifies it, thank you.
Yeah, you can see them in the, in this, the plan, you can see the...
Uh, oh yeah, yeah, I see them now, yes, that's fine, yeah, I just wanted to make sure you weren't using the piers as the bollards.
And, uh, I, I have one more thing, it's, it's, uh, you know, TJ's is, is an iconic restaurant, I mean, it, it, everybody knows where it is, and it, and you're doing a very contemporary earth tone front on it, is there any way that you could, uh, soften the green to match what you're doing? Could you paint the green, or, or are you, I, I mean, I get that's a recognizable building, but it would be, if you could incorporate that green, a, a little bit more neutral color to...
I will definitely consider it, I, I'm, I'm really all about making it, um, bringing it up to date, we've been there for thirty years, and I haven't really done a whole lot, and I, you know, I've wanted to, I've done business with Maru's Brothers, you know, forever, and that's, you know, the only company I considered doing something like this, and have anybody else look at it. So, you know, I will talk to them about that, I, I will let you know, too, you know, that the TJ's logo on the side of the building, um, I just signed a, you know, contract with Rough Neon, and they'll be, I don't know if it goes in front of you, or who it goes in front of, but they're gonna, 'cause that's gonna be my sign now, so it's gonna be lit up, it'll still be burgundy, and it's still gonna be probably about the same size, but I, I wanted to, you know, I'm not real happy with that. But as far as the green, I mean, 'cause green and burgundy are kind of our colors.
Right, I mean, you don't even need a sign, everybody knows what it is.
Yeah, I know, but that's, you know, that, it'll be lit up, and, you know, if you're coming from the, uh, coming from the east, you'll be able to see it good, because my, the sign that's there now will be coming down, obviously, and then we have, you know, we're putting something small up, uh, in between the pillars.
Okay.
You know, I'll, I'll consider it, and I'll, maybe they'll toss it in, right?
Yeah, no, well, we could...
Well, that's coming back to us, right Kathy? The, the reimage?
Well, the architectural review is a separate line item, it's night, it's number five, this is for the actual outside patio at the moment.
Okay.
Could I ask a question?
Sure, Mr. Varga.
Just 'cause I don't know, there's this one image here that has the little, the red squares along, what is that denoting?
Uh, that, that, there's gonna be a stone wainscot, the same height as those piers, and each of the green bands that come down to the ground, just to kinda bring the stone, not just on the front, but kind of incorporated throughout the building.
I understand, thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else?
I do have a quick question to the applicant, uh, the grease trap, do you have any concerns about not accessing that anymore?
We will be able to access, you, you'll see, there's like a little, um...
We, we turned it, we curved the fence out and around it. Uh, they currently access it from that side of the building, so...
Yeah, they usually pull into Sun Rental when they, when they clean it, and that's really the only way they'll still be able to do it. I don't think that's gonna change anything, but, um, but yes, I told them I didn't want that in the middle of my patio. Brought up immediately.
I do have one quick question, too, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
The, uh, the gate that you're showing on the patio is, will the access to the patio be through the restaurant only, or are you expecting people are just gonna walk in?
Well, I believe it's, it, that gate is just there for an emergency egress.
It's really close to sidewalk, so, yeah.
Because there, that door out of the restaurant is a egress door to allow them to continue on out.
But now, the, people won't be able to exit the patio from, from the patio? They'll have to go through the restaurant to exit it? I know to enter it, they will.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, if how they were getting on the patio, was through the restaurant?
I, well, I guess, I thought it was the intention was that they had to enter the patio through the restaurant, so that people know that they're there.
Yes, I, yeah, that I would agree with, but as far as, um, exiting, if, you know, when they're done eating, I would hope that they can just exit it without going through the restaurant, just less traffic inside the restaurant, but, I, we had discussed it, but...
I guess, is there a way to denote that, I mean, or will people know when they walk up? Are they just gonna walk onto the patio through that gate?
Well, that's, it looks like it's about...
We could put a sign or something, see the hostess, because we, we're not gonna have a hostess standing or anything.
We could control it with the hardware on the gate, but it does it all from the outside.
You guys are big, I mean, I was there today, two o'clock in the afternoon, and your parking lot was busy, so, um, hopefully people will realize they should go inside.
Yeah, and I, you know, just by the way that sidewalk, it's like, still, to this day, I still get occasions of people, but, people know that, I mean, I have really no intentions on putting a hostess or anything out there to let people, you know. We'll do whatever we have to do to make sure that, you know...
I think we could control it with the hardware on the gate itself, if we don't put the deck, the hardware to get out would be on the inside, not the outside.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Can I get a motion on the conditional use permit only?
I'll make a motion to approve with six, uh, conditions.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Hang loose, you'll be, you'll be up quick.
Okay, thank you.
Number seven is gonna, or number three will remain on the table. And number four, can I get a motion to remove it from the table?
I'll motion to remove it from the table.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. So with that, we have a conditional use permit to allow a commercial recreational facility, karate and fitness studio at ninety-one zero-seven Mennor Avenue. Larry, is that applicant here, or in the audience?
I have unmuted Ken Wilson.
Okay. Ken, please state your name and address for the clerk.
Kenneth Wilson, nine-one-zero-seven Mennor Avenue, Menor, Ohio.
Thank you. So did we figure out the parking? Ken?
Yes, um, I went ahead and purchased the signs for the handicap and the reserved parking, and I have not purchased the parking blocks yet. It was suggested last meeting that we use, uh, painting on the wall to designate parking spaces, which I'm fine with, if you wish to do it that way.
Okay, thank you. I, I, I actually like the way it's like this, I like, I think that is enough of a designation, this is a building people know, and, and, uh, flow would get used to how the parking is, uh, for what it's worth, so, is there anything else from the commissioners?
Just, just for clarification, so you're gonna put a parking, like a wheelstop parking block in front of every parking space?
At least the three for me.
Kathy?
I mean, I...
Well, they're the subject of the, of the...
Yeah, I understand, I, I mean, I don't, I think that's a good way to handle it, I'd rather do that than the part, anything on the building, 'cause that'll go away. Uh, ultimately, uh, can we require the owner to, uh, put those blocks on all the spaces, or improve the lot, one or the other?
Yeah, you could refer to that, I don't know what he would plan to do, but I'll do mine.
I mean, I appreciate him, him putting in the blocks for his space, that's great, that seems to be a reasonable compromise relative to his position. What about the, the, the rest of the parking spaces that are not defined? Uh, do we have concern about that at this point?
As far as, what do you mean?
No, I'm asking the city this question.
Well, and maybe the, the law director has some input as well, but I, my only thought is, is we wanna be careful with, it, it is an adjoining parcel, and so, uh, and I know the adjoining property owner has provided, you know, consent, and that they've, apparently they've always used this area for parking, but, you know, the allowance for delineating all the spaces obviously would need to be something that the property owner would need to be agreeable to.
Yeah, my only concern, I think the three spaces that he needs, and he's designating them with those parking blocks, that seems to be a reasonable compromise for him to be able to designate his parking spaces. But we have all these other parking spaces that are not defined, I mean, you go out there and just grab them. So, uh, would we, would be, I'm not trying to create a problem, I'm just trying to see, is, is, is leaving it the way it is now acceptable to the city?
Mr. Zaiman? Do we have any?
Been like that for decades, it hasn't been a problem, um, obviously, if there, there had been some concerns out there, one would expect the property owners, you know, who wanna protect their investment, not to mention, um, you know, their insurance rates, would have installed something. I, I don't know what problem it's solving, sir, frankly.
Alright, well then, that's fine, if, for what this app, applicant is doing, he's responding to the requirement to define his spaces, I don't know what else we can do.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Yeah, just, just a point, that's, he needs four spaces, right? One handicap and three spots?
Well, we indicated, we, yeah, we were recommending that one handicap be for the, you know, the entire building, so he should have three in addition to that, right?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that's four parking blocks?
Four.
Yeah, it's, it's under item five of the condition.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Is there anything else?
I'll motion with the seven conditions. Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Architecture review, reimage of a restaurant at seventy-four eighty-five Mennor Avenue, TJ's, please, please come back up. Thank you. I know we kinda touched on the, the reimagining a little bit during the CUP, but I, I guess the only thing I had is, is can we look at the green again, can, you know, to, to...
What color would you like it?
Uh, like a nu, like a neutral tone.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm definitely open to suggestions.
We could talk about that, I mean, maybe you just keep the green around the entranceway and around the windows, and kinda change the big bands to a different color, so you get an accent of green.
I do, I had it done not that long ago, that was one of the things, I had the entire building stuck overnight, you know, I...
Kathy, do you have anything on this, on the, on the...
So, my understanding, and maybe Larry, I know the, the, the canopy, if, if you could show the canopy, so the shutters are gonna go away, correct?
Yeah. Oh, actually, I don't know, are they?
Yes.
They're, okay, yes. Yeah, yeah, that's right.
So then will that green block underneath the windows go away as well?
Yes, and so it'll just be an accent trim around the windows, that's just a, a simple four-inch trim, rather than the, uh...
And he's got the awning, I don't know if you saw...
Yeah, the awnings are gonna be black, correct?
Yeah.
So it's gonna look like this in the picture here?
Actually similar, I think, I think.
Yes, yep.
So when you look at that picture, a lot more use of white, I mean, obviously, you're not gonna add brick, but maybe you add more black?
No, that's what my wife just said, so, she did just say that, so...
And then the stone, the stone pillars are kinda neutral, are neutral, you know?
Yeah, the stone with the black, and then you keep your, your maroon color, that might look sharp and look a little, get the modern look you're looking for.
Definitely not if I was to...
Is that something we can, they can work with you and come up with a...
Sure, did you wanna make a particular condition, or...
Well, that, that would be the only condition under the architectural reimage of, yeah.
Is this part of the reimagining, to modify the green? I mean, I don't know if we necessarily wanna say make it black, have them work with the city on, you know...
Compatible, compatible colors?
Addable color to the other changes.
With the, with the modifications, yeah.
Yeah, that's good, that's good Kathy.
Then they could approve that administratively, if we, okay.
Is there anything else? Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion with one condition. Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
We have an architectural review, reimage of a shopping plaza at seventy-seven twenty Mennor Avenue. Larry, is that applicant online?
Yes, he is, give me a second to unmute him. Jonathan, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you, please state your name and address for the clerk.
Wonderful, um, Jonathan Novak, uh, address, five zero zero Henry Road.
You gotta speak up a little bit, it's real muffled.
Okay, I'll speak up more, I think we had this problem last month. Can you hear me a little bit more if I shout?
Yeah.
Yes, shout.
Take off your mask.
Take, take your mask off, yeah.
Not us, it's you.
Uh, if not, I'm, I'm on my headphones, so I can jump over to, so, and, if it's loud.
You've, you've got the tremble turned on.
Yeah, um, okay, so, uh, since last month, and, uh, we showed you the project, um, a few things have kinda naturally evolved, um, the, uh, hold on, I'm gonna get a little too fast. Is this better? Can you guys hear me okay? Hello?
I can't hear you at all, hello?
Now you can hear me. Um, I apologize. So, um, so some things have naturally evolved since last month, um, we've, uh, moved forward with some tenants, new tenants have been brought on board with...
I can, we can barely hear you.
Can't hear you anymore.
Okay.
There we go.
This is Matt Worthley talking, I'm the developer with Thomas English Retail Real Estate, my address is eight-four-one East Sixty-Fourth Street, Indianapolis, Indiana. If I may, uh, I'd like to step in for Jonathan, it appears we're having some trouble hearing him, um, so, long story short, um, commissioners, we, we originally approached you guys with a seventy-two-hundred square foot building that we were, um, planning to do a three-tenant project, and we were lucky enough to land on two tenants for this building, uh, therefore alleviating the need for, um, three tenants, and, and with, with that, um, came some architectural changes to accommodate the second tenant, um, so specifically, the sign ban over the western edge of, the western portion of the building, so, if you'll recall, we originally had, um, come to you guys with a design, um, that, that had three tenants, and, um, it had a, a number of different design features there, it showed there, um, so, by, um, by releasing efforts, we were able to secure the second tenant, and therefore, these design changes were kind of a direct evolution of that building and those leasing efforts, so, the building will be two tenants, not three tenants, therefore, we, 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 the proposed changes in front of you this evening are for, to accommodate the, those changes.
Thank you. Anything from administration?
No, you have the sample board that's up at the, uh, up at the table, uh, I know the, note the major change with the, the, that marine blue is, is now gone, but it's a, what is it, more of a gray, is that correct?
Yes.
Otherwise, no other comments.
Anything from the fellow commissioners?
One, I have one question. On your new floor plan, or the sheet, A one oh, A one point oh, uh, on the west elevation towards the front, you show a door coming out the side of the building, on the plan, you don't show that door. Uh, I was trying to figure out, where does that door go?
Um, so, I, I apologize, I, I don't see the door you're referencing, but, so, what we're proposing...
Yeah, the door is on the west elevation, number four, it's in the first section of windows, there's a door on the west elevation.
Uh, on, on the, on the north, on the north elevation, they're proposing a roll-up garage door window, if that's what you're referring to.
No, that's not, no, I'm, I'm talking about the west elevation, the elevation number four.
I don't believe there's a door there. Jonathan, are you, are you there? Is there a door there? Because I don't believe there's a door there.
Okay, well, it shows on the elevation. That's why I'm just asking, because it shows it on the elevation, doesn't show it on the plan. I was just, there you go. It's right there on the screen.
Yeah, I I apologize, sir. I cannot answer that. I do not believe that that's a door. I believe that that the only doors are the front door, the roll-up garage door, and then the two doors on the, on the south side of the building.
That's fine. You just answered my question. So there's no door there. Okay?
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Can I get a motion?
A motion for approval. No conditions.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden? Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Miscellaneous review of an amendment to a conditional use permit to expand an existing warehouse with limited retail activities at 7630 Tyler Boulevard. Larry, is that applicant here?
Yes, he is. I have unmuted the applicant.
Will you tell us a little bit about what you want to do? It sounds like business is good.
Hello there. Hello, sir. Yes, the business is being good, but we are planning for upcoming features, so that's why we are planning to add
I'm sorry, real quick, could you state your name and address for the clerk?
Yes, yes. Hi, this is Ashish Patel and I'm from 7630 Tyler Boulevard, unit number six, and our proposal to add unit number five to existing unit number six for only warehouse purpose.
Okay, only the warehouse, so same if I remember correctly, the last time you were here, there was what, 15 or 20% could be walk-up sales, so you won't exceed that any it'll all remain the same?
No, yeah, there will not be any exceed, nothing, not at all. Like, we only, like, I'm taking the unit number five only for warehouse purpose to store our, our stuff over there. Yeah, there will be no, any retail activity on unit number five. There will be, remain at the unit number six only. They're already approved.
All right. Thank you. Anything from administration?
Nothing.
Anything from fellow commissioners?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Just a question. Do you plan on putting a door in between the units at any time or to have access to the unit five?
No, no, there will be only at the backside in the warehouse, there is a cutoff which is very accessible to open, that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Can I get a
Motion to approve with three conditions.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, number eight from the agenda tonight has been withdrawn. Number nine, an architectural review reimage of a commercial building at 9581 Mennor Avenue. Larry, is that applicant here?
Yes, they are. I will unmute Catherine now.
Catherine, please state your full name and address for the clerk.
My name is Catherine Lester. Address, 2019 Center Street, Suite 500, Cleveland, Ohio.
Thank you. Please tell us a little bit about what you want to do.
I'm going to request that you unmute Bill Lewis as well.
Larry, is Bill here?
Bill is here and he's now unmuted.
Great. Bill, will you state your name and address for the clerk?
Yeah, thank you. Hi, this is Bill Lewis. I'm with Bowen and Associates, 2019 Center Street, Cleveland, Ohio. So, we are architects for Kohl's Apartment Stores at 9581 Mennor Avenue. And Kohl's has partnered with Sephora Beauty. Sephora will be adding a, about a 2,500 square foot beauty center within the existing Kohl's apartment stores. And they wish to have the stores that are receiving the, this Sephora beauty department, wish to show that on the exterior of the building. So for the, what we call the prototypical Kohl's two-story entries, this is the design that, that we've come up with to reflect that Sephora branding on the exterior of the building. Kind of is a nationwide rollout. So it's, it's really, it's a paint upgrade to the existing facade. No material changes. And then the signage will be the signage is actually under a separate permit, so we're here for the we submitted plans for the, the interior renovations and then the, the exterior reimagining.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything from administration?
I would just note, this, this came up with a similar review you had probably about a year, a year and a half ago with the Jo-Ann Fabric Store. And I guess I would ask if the law director would also chime in with our comments that, with regard to the sign area. This is a the black and white striping is, is part of the Sephora branding. And so in that regard, you know, you could almost consider that whole area to be sign area. And so we want, I don't know if they're aware of that, we want them to be careful of that because then that changes, obviously, what they can put on the wall from a sign computation standpoint. And maybe that could be taken into consideration as to how much of the area is painted. And I guess the other comment I had was, there's two different renderings that we've received. One shows the Sephora on the west entrance and the other one shows it on the east entrance, and so we need clarification on that as well.
Mr. Zeman?
Trade dress is kind of sometimes a bit of a difficult aspect to apply our sign code to. In a certain respect, you know, we see a lot of template, you know, buildings, whether it's for fast food restaurants or things of that nature, the generally, the overall design actually is, you know, fairly indicative of, of what the business is. In this particular case, obviously, the trade dress is the black and white, you know, color scheme. And then, you know, it's kind of augmented with some striping. I frankly think it's, it's probably you know, you could certainly make the case that it's not necessarily a, a, a signed platform. And that the Sephora wording itself, you know, would, would, would fall into the sign permits solely. You know, so my recommendation is treat the trade dress in this particular case, because I think it's probably on the, you know, an arguable point. If it's an arguable point, we are on the side of, of protecting property owners' rights. So I would look at it purely as an architectural element and whether or not it fits pursuant to architectural guidelines with the overall composition of the building or if some other modifications can happen to it. I, I understand it's their trade dress, but you know, it's not a clear case in my judgment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything from fellow commissioners? Chairman? Which way are we going here?
I just want to address the, one of the comments that the administration had made earlier in, in our packet was that the reimaging of this based, whether it's left or right entrance, really becomes asymmetrical when this building really has two entrances to the Kohl's and is very symmetrical with color schemes, et cetera. And then we're adding this element that, that the administration, as well as myself, doesn't believe that this fits in with the actual scheming of the whole complex. So could you address that as well?
Yeah, so as far as, if that's addressed back to me, as far as the the entry that will be branded, it is the right entrance. It's gone back and forth a couple of times. We've done, I think, committed a rendering with it. Originally was the left and they have kind of made a blanket statement. It's going to be nationally, it'll always be the right entrance that gets branded with the Sephora as a Sephora entrance. As to the unbalanced, that was new to us, you know, once he's, once it came up, we kind of sat back and looked at it and that's true. Again, it's a, it's a national rollout. We're working with Kohl's and 200 sites. The agreement with Sephora is that one entrance is probably 60 to 70% of the Kohl's out there right now. It's their standard two entrances. This is their large store format, which they no longer construct, but there's a number of stores out there. Their agreement is that once, one entrance will be branded Sephora, it will now always be the right entrance. It's, again, just to kind of keep that consistency across the brand nationally. So I guess you know, we'd have to, if, if it's an issue, we'll just have to take it back to corporate and, and see what their thoughts are at this point.
Thank you. Yeah, I was just mentioning as well as what Mr. Zeman had stated earlier is that maybe that became a branding and would a sign suffice, but I, I, I see that we're going to run into that corporate where they've already come up to this, this rollout that this happens on all stores. So in, in our case, though, it's a very symmetrical and I guess earth tone building, so I have issues with that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Varga?
Mr. Chairman, to the applicant, is there, is there a Plan B? I mean, is there an, is there a more subtle alternate to this as a standard application? To your rollout?
Not, not that I'm aware of at this point. Like I said, we, we can take it back. The alternate is probably going to be leaving it as is and then maybe come up with some additional idea for, for how the signage gets applied to the building. We've done some unique stores where it doesn't have a two-entry, where it gets a kind of a Kohl's plus Sephora branded sign as opposed to branding one of the entrances. So that could be a possibility, but as far as addressing, you know, different color paints or anything like that, the design, we have not we have not changed the design on any of the other sites that we've worked on.
No, no, my thought wasn't that you change the colors or maybe not even any of the elements, but there might have been a sometimes when you do things like this, you have a a Plan A and then you have a Plan B that might be a little more subtle.
No, we've got the varying prototypes for the Kohl's. This, this is kind of one of their older traditional, we call it the waterfall entrance. That is, this is the design that's being applied to those. The new innovation stores, it's very similar. It still gets the stripes, the black and white. It's just applied in a different way to the different entrances. But yeah, that's a good image of their, kind of their, their brand image that they're trying to to reflect.
Ms. Mitchell?
This, this example, I was looking at some other Sephora stores and some of how they brand some of the other stores and and obviously every community has their own set of regs. However, you still see the striping here. It's a little bit more subtle across the top. I mean, that's something to, to think about. I know we've done that when we've looked at other
Yeah, something like that.
Other retail. We've looked at some of their other stores and how they
Right.
How they, you know, present their
Something like that's a little more muted. That could possibly work.
Did I hear you say you do like a Kohl's plus Sephora sign? Is there any way that we could not do an entrance at all and just put some signage on there to show people that it's, it's inside Kohl's? I mean, is that
Yeah, it's happened, like I said, on, on unique stores, a lot of them are in malls, where we don't have that, that kind of traditional two-store, two-entry Kohl's store, where we don't have the opportunity to brand an entrance. Or there, there's some Kohl's out there with only one entrance. If it's a single entrance, they don't brand it as Sephora. So that would just get a signage upgrade. So so that is kind of the fallback, if there were one. You know, outside of, you know, we could always go back to them and say hey, instead of, you know, just the sign, you know, the city was amenable to maybe more, a more of a muted concept and, and see how that flies. Again, it's really corporate. The two corporate entities have come up with the design and we're, we're applying it to as a rollout onto their, onto their stores. So we would definitely have to have that discussion and, and come back.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Varga?
Would you, you think we might want to table this and let them come back with maybe some alternatives?
Is that a motion?
That's a motion, if it's acceptable to everyone.
I'll second.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Yes.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Perkovich?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you, and we look forward to a softer side.
Thanks for the time.
Okay, we have a preliminary site plan of a storage facility, 7840 and 7870 Tyler Boulevard.
Mr. Chair, before we get started, I, I need to abstain and remove myself from the discussion as Lake Health is part of, is selling the land in this transaction.
Okay, thank you. Is that applicant here, Larry?
Yes, he is. I will unmute Jim Sapp now and I believe Andy Cash. You are both unmuted now.
So whoever's going to speak, please state your name and address for the clerk.
My name is Jim Sapp, 8070 Castleton Road, Indianapolis, Indiana, 46250. I'm the developer. Andy Cash is with Ryland Engineering, our engineer. This is what we, what we do is called co-warehousing. Pretty new in the industry. We are not self-stored. The only people in our facilities are businesses. We accelerate businesses. 60% of the businesses with us are medium-sized businesses that are growing and need more space. They come to us for short to mid-size warehousing. We have one building with offices, conference rooms. We also have forklifts for them to use and thus co-warehousing. It's gated. We have very little entrance. Activity through the gate today are about 125 to 150. Most of the time, 40% of our tenants are big corporations. They put widgets into the warehouse. They're doing some special project in the Cleveland area. They may sit there for three or four months. So not a lot of activity. We have one monument sign out front. I think we meet or exceed your parking. We do need to adjust a few things. We can adjust on the side streets with metal and brick. But everything, you laid out everything very well. I can go on, but I'll let you ask questions if there's any concerns and Andy can answer. Although this is just preliminary, Andy can answer any engineering questions for you.
Okay, thank you. Anything from administration?
Nothing other than that conditions noted.
I know right off the bat in the staff report under building description, and you touched on it a little bit, was the recommended use of masonry as a dominant building material and if painted, metal panels are used. They should not be using office portion of a building, et cetera, et cetera. Did you read that in the staff report?
I did.
So you faced two right-ofaways. So
We did.
Okay, so the two sides
Yeah, we will adjust the, the stone and the glass on the two street sides.
Okay.
That's not a problem.
I mean, I like the concept of it. You know, we, we have had before the planning board, people that have had some businesses in and out of their houses, and I think this gives them an opportunity to maybe expand a little bit into a into a place like this before they can make another jump into a more of a permanent building. I don't, I don't want to say permanent, but more of a, maybe a different location. But there's a long way on the design, so I'm not, I'm not
We will work with
Go ahead.
We'll work with staff and our architect to meet your standards. You're correct. The average tenant stays with us three and a half years and then they move on. We're too small. But I will tell you, history shows that they stay within three miles. When the, when the site gets up, we're having about 450 employees that at one time during the month or week will come in. So it is bringing businesses, we have about 150 businesses lease from us and those businesses will stay in the area and grow.
Okay, thank you. Any, is there anything else from the
I, I just have a few questions. I'm trying, I, I see the architectural approach. There's 17 buildings here.
Yes.
Are there buildings that are going to be designated only as office buildings or are they always combined uses?
No, very few are office warehouse. Most of them, 80%, are just warehouses. The 20 series you see up front on Tyler, some of those will have office warehouse connected and two of those up front will have about half their space in office only. And then the back warehouse. So it's a combination. We have about six different models, different widths, this, different heights, different door sizes.
So the idea would be that the ones that are, that are office uses, you have this, I don't, I, I don't know if you can see us. You gave us a, a sheet that showed some building eleva, it says Rise Commercial District, general bus, building elevations. There's one with a, the end of a building with a sloped roof has two entrances and a canopy. Those would be on the faces of all the buildings at the north end. They'd be at the north face. They would look like that. They'd be at the north face. They would look like that. And that the-
They would be on, is that, is the north face Tyler?
The buildings that would be closest to Tyler, they would look like the ones that have the two doors, the two man doors with the awnings and the masonry bases.
Well, we plan on putting more stone on the front.
And you'd put more stone, right.
But overall, yes. They're wholesalers. They're not retailers. They come in there for an hour or two a day, and they have product in the back.
And then, okay, and then the buildings in the back would be, their end elevations would be much more like the one that shows the two doors, the two man doors and the two overhead doors.
Yeah, they'll just be straight warehouse-
Just warehouse, okay. I'm just trying to see how this would disperse itself.
You can't see, any of the garage doors will not be seen from either street. We have a fence around it. It's very low-keyed. We don't want a lot of people coming and trying to get in. So it's a gated facility just for businesses to hold their secure equipment and widgets.
I guess my only reaction is that from a storage building's point of view, these buildings are, you know, relatively inexpensive. And I, as storage buildings, I guess I don't have a big negative reaction. But as office buildings, I see them as being really, really inexpensive office buildings, not similar to the kind of office buildings we have in the community. So I'm just trying to feel out the, how this works. And, you know, there's a, there's a storage building group right next to you, to the west of you, but they built a big masonry wall, so you don't even see these buildings.
Our people are in their offices an hour or two a day. I would agree with you. They're not Class A offices. But I think if you get on our website, you see they're pretty nice. Everything's, everything's very nice. And there's only like fourteen offices in Building 15 and Building 16. So people do need some office. They do need some fast Wi-Fi to do their transactions. So we're sharing office. We're sharing conference rooms. This will be our fourteenth facility. They're going over very well in the Midwest. This is the first one in the Cleveland area. We have one going up in Toledo. We have a purchase agreement out in Avon. I feel very confident about coming to this area. You have good access, good utilities. We're excited about coming. It's going to be about a $10 million investment over the course of two years. We build it in two to three phases.
So, and just, I'm following your conversation. So right now, you're talking about Buildings 15 and 16 being office buildings. What about 21, 22, and 23? They look, in plan, they look exactly the same as the other two. Are those also-
We do use the same footprint, same size. The 20 series will have the two offices in front, and then the warehouses in back. The 15 and 16 will have offices in front and offices along that courtyard between 15 and 16. And then they enter on the right. So we're adding more small flex spaces, we'd normally call it. But our offices are about 400 square feet and an 800-square-foot warehouse behind it.
Kathy, go ahead, go ahead. Don't let me cut you off.
It's areas that people can leave their home and start growing their business. And we're an accelerator of that business, and then they're eventually go out and get their own building.
No, I like the idea. I don't want to give the impression that somehow I'm being negative about the whole thing. I'm just trying to understand the proposal. And Kathy, this is preliminary, right?
Correct.
Yes.
So if you built these out in other locations, it would be nice if you could show us the finished environment that you're talking about.
Okay, we can do that.
That would help us visualize more the nature of this campus as to how it would look.
We're actually doing a new video on Tuesday in Noblesville, Indiana, just a suburb of Indianapolis. So we will have that by the final hearing.
That's great. I do have one thing to give them a little bit more of a finished look is I'd like to see the buildings have soffits and overhangs. Would that be a problem?
I'd have to ask the architect.
Okay.
We try, I don't know, but I know we have to keep them high so, you know, the trucks and the step bands don't hit them.
Right, I understand. But any soffit or overhang is better than a dead stop there. Something, food for thought, something to look at.
I can, I can ask the architect.
Okay.
I just have one other question.
Mr. Varga?
My brain is kind of running on this. So the kind of construction these buildings are, are these pre-engineered buildings?
Well, they're steel-framed outside and steel-framed inside. Is that your question?
Well, I guess so, yeah. I mean, so when the buildings that you have for office use, you firm out on the inside with insulation and drywall?
Everything's insulated. Every warehouse is insulated.
Okay. The only thing that I just react to, and just a level of concern, and maybe you can address this. You know, the reason a lot of these buildings have masonry bases all the way around isn't just for aesthetics. It's to protect the bottom portion of the building from the metal from rusting, from getting damaged, being able to control the base on the outside. You might want to address that when you come back with the more, with the final presentation because my experience with metal buildings like this, when the metal comes right down the grade, is that they don't hold up very well at all in our climate, you know?
We have a 40-year warranty on the metal for color and finish. But I'll talk to the architects about it. That's a good question.
Sure. Thank you.
Is there anything else?
I would just like to mention that the fire department had several comments, and I just want the applicant to be, make note of those.
Okay, we're looking at them, and we will talk to them or Kathy about some of those issues.
So you have a copy of the staff report, and you've read it, and you agree with all the, everything in it and the conditions?
Well, I agree some of them need to be talked about. I don't, I don't agree with the gate that he wanted a single gate. I think that's bringing issues with snow and entrances and people coming in and out the same gate. But I'll be glad to talk to whoever about it.
Okay, thank you. And with that, can I get a... Motion?
Motion to approve with the eight conditions. Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Tiedemann?
Yes.
Mr. Varga?
Yes.
Mr. Cicero?
Abstain.
Mr. Hadden?
Yes.
Mr. Prkovic?
No.
Mr. Cook?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy, is there anything?
Nothing else to report.
All right, thank you. Motion to adjourn.